All right, like we call the November 16th, 2022 Brookline Select Your Meeting to order. The time is 6:42 PM. Present in the room are Selectmen Bruce Mello, Stan Noga, and myself, Dr. Maggio. Highway Supervisor Mark Bills is here. Our Fact TV Videographer Steve is around. And it looks like Fact TV is online and Peter Barris. Peter told me that he will have to probably get most of his work done. Are you going to be able to stay with us or are you going to be doing Wyndham's school system?
I have to do the WCFU Board. They may be brief, I have no idea.
All right, well, we will have this recorded for you in Fact TV. And if you can't find the link, just shoot me an email and I'll send it to you like I did that last week, okay?
Thanks.
All right, so we'll continue with the meeting. Any changes to the agenda at this time, Mr. Mello?
I want to take the 5A and move it to after the discussion of the budget. So we can decide after the road budget, so we can decide at that point what we need to do in terms of the extra time.
All right, so move new business, basically.
Yeah.
To before item eight, before some updates. That's, is that all right with you, Mr. Noga?
Yes, it is.
New business.
We already talked about that.
All right, we're moving new business to after the budget discussion.
Is there a payroll warrant for this meeting? Is there a payroll warrant for this meeting?
Yes, it came out, it came out on March 4th, November 4th.
Oh.
Right, right after our November 2nd meeting was the payroll.
Because we'll get it ahead of time.
Okay.
All right, no other changes? Hearing none. Any members of schedule or unscheduled? I have no scheduled members and there doesn't seem to be any unscheduled. All right, moving along, we'll go to pay orders. First one I'll take a look at is accounts payable. I do have a question, but I will make the motion to start us off. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Accounts Payable Warrant 2320 dated November 16th, 2022 in the amount of $7,762.63. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Noga. Discussion? I have one question and I think I know the answer to it. Guy Nido delivered diesel fuel and that went down to your shed?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what I was making sure that that was diesel fuel for our shed. Any other discussion items for accounts payable? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Accounts Payable Warrant 2320 in the amount of $7,762.63, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously. I'll pass this around for you to sign. Next, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Payroll Warrant 2219 dated November 4th, 2022 in the amount of $1,909.40. May I have a second? Seconded by Bruce Mello. Any discussion? I do, I just realized it says the check warrant report is 2219, but down at the bottom, it says the warrant number is 2023-17.
So I think the way they're numbered in the last minutes, there was a a 17A, but there was no 17.
Well, this is 19 and 17. It's all on the same page.
Oh.
But this is Payroll Warrant 2320.
Right.
And this says Payroll Warrant 2219.
Uh, look at the minutes, I think, I think that what happened is because the $60 that was paid to myself for my application for attendance to the DLCT Fair was not, it was handled, there was clarity that was missing on the way it was interpreted and presented, which caused it to be built in and payable to another person.
However, I'm not, I don't think it's the same question. I'm going to show you, I have two different numbers, love.
I guess then all that's, huh. All I want to say is that we had one for $60, which was 2318A last meeting. And then we had one for $1,836.38 that was 23-17.
So this one has 2317 on it.
Okay.
And 23, 22, 920. That's what I'm saying, these are two different numbers here and here.
I know that, and obviously one of them's got to be wrong.
Well, um.
Irrespective of that, if the numbers come out okay, and looking at the numbers that have been used, 17 and 18A, it would almost seem logical to assume that 19 is a valid number.
All right, I will go with check warrant 22-19 as the official number. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving Payroll Warrant 22-19 dated November 5th, 2022 in the amount of $1,909.40, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, am I opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Okay, there's a strange thing on the video screen.
Yes, there is.
At this point, I have to, at this point, I have to check out might be later or maybe not. Thanks.
Pass that down?
You signed it already, right?
I signed it, yes. Payroll check numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Mello.
Okay, um, new business has been moved, now we shall go to old business. Thank you. Um, old business driveway culvert policy package. Mark, we sent both to you and Archie, the current, the updated policy packet as amended packet for the town. We had a question about the, it shall not be less than 15 inches in one area and then in another area it said should not be less than 18 inches. Which is the size that you prefer?
I didn't get it, I didn't get a hold of Archie to defer with him. The state had a recommendation for the 18 inch under the road, 15 on driveway.
All right, this is driveway.
Yes.
So driveway is 15.
It was, and I think the town has an opportunity to change it to 15 if they wish.
What if they put up a Mac Masters?
15.
So.
And the one that Dick Mr. Born put in up on Putney Mountain?
Yeah, yeah, that was 15 inch.
Well, we can always change it if we find out later or Mark warns or whatever that 18 is the desire. I suspect there's a Christ difference of 18 versus a 15.
Yes, there is. I'm not sure of those numbers, but yeah.
Okay.
I ended.
All right.
So we'll get to it. I thought Archie was going to be here tonight.
I did not hear, I don't know, I didn't hear from him.
Yeah, well, we had talked about, you know, budgeting different things and he said that he was going to try to be there.
Okay, so he said 7:30 is when we had it on this calendar, uh, agenda, so maybe we'll come to him on. All right, um.
You know, some places where 15 may not be right, you know, the place where 18 is way too big, so it's.
Well, it's, the way it says on here on the overview, it says driveway culverts installed within the town's right of way shall not be less than 15 inches.
Yeah, that I agree, not less than wide, we need to close this more.
And.
Definitely 15.
Which is.
Can we table it till Archie arrives?
I think that if.
All right.
It's the.
Okay, let's table this. The next item will be very quick. On the agenda, it says a request for a proposal local hazard mitigation planning services, which I emailed out. I had misunderstood, or I had confused our local emergency management plan and the local hazard mitigation planning services as being one and the same, and they are not. Our local emergency plan, we have, and we're good on that. We redo that every year in April and approve it before May and send it to Wyndham Regional. This local hazard mitigation planning service is for a grant and, let me just summarize it here. I sent it to you late tonight, I just got this at 3:50. Brookline already has funding for the, for that, because the town applied through BEM to update the local hazard mitigation plan. Brookline has funding under FEMA's BRIC 2020 grant round. So you do not need to apply this year by December 9th. Goes on to say, they are looking for our Department of Public Works DPS web survey, which we tried to look at, well, we sent it along to Melissa. Melissa completed it and sent us a copy of it. And when I communicated with Caroline Paskey today, she asked for the survey and I said, we completed it, here it is attached, and she was very happy. So we are okay with this plan and we don't have to do anything at this time. But those mitigation, this money can be used to plan for additional mitigation with the 75.25 FEMA grant coverage, which if FEMA does not cover the, the, you know what I'm talking about, that last culvert thing, this is something we can put in the mitigation grant. Okay, it's still through FEMA. All right, so move on then to what's your plan? Unless you wanted to move up the roads and that.
I don't mind. If you want to get that stuff out of the way right now, fine, because the way it appears is though there's a chance Archie might show up.
Okay.
So if that happens, it happens, it doesn't, if it happens, he can be involved in conversation, so.
All right, so you want to go back and put new business again?
Uh, no, that's not what I meant.
I don't know what you're saying.
I think what you were intending to do, meaning reports and updates.
Okay, reports and updates.
Get that done, if that's what you want to do, rather than doing that.
I do think we talked, all right, we didn't modify this agenda initially to move that ahead of the budget planning, but due to the time and the fact that Archie may be coming at 7:30, I think that's a prudent thing to do. So please note that we are amending the agenda to cover right now reports and updates. Mark, you want to give a brief summary of?
Yeah, I think that's what I've been doing. So I've been for winter week, now I have two loads of road salt up into the salt shed. Knowing that possible there was going to be a chance for shortage, we pushed it as far as we could. We have two loads now in the sheds and it appears like we could sit a third load.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, I didn't know about the shed's capacity. And I wanted the Select Board to consider whether they wanted to order a third load at this time.
It's on.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, we've been getting just a straight dump truck load rather than a trailer load. It's easier for them to maneuver into the shed.
So they get like a 17 yard instead of like a 15 or 16?
Well, this is 22 tons per load, it's like a 16, well, somewhere near a 16 yard dump truck.
Oh, that's great.
Probably axle under the back for passing. And it measures 22 to 23 tons roughly per load, depending on the, the actual.
So you're going to get, you're thinking a third load of that size?
Yeah, yeah.
Looking at the bill here and it was $1,960.
That went for one load?
For, I'm just trying to see here, net weight 46,000 pounds.
46. I guess.
23.
The last proceeded, I'm not sure, this is the second load.
Yeah, this was delivered, this hasn't, yeah, this was delivered on the 9th, that's the 11th. So this, this load will also be. 22, okay. Gross power net. And does it say the cost of it? Or are they going to send this as a bill? They said it's a bill. All right, so one bill, it's going to be a, so this was $2,000. We're going to have another 2,000, do we want to go for $6,000?
The reason we were trying to stockpile is they claim the trains might slow up progress due to the strength.
We've budgeted for it.
And our stockpile from Targill is stockpiling in Rockingham beside the railroad. And usually there's a pile that is bigger than the building that's there, which is bigger than a football field. There's no salt showing up there. I mean, what I mean is you can't see it from Route 5. And normally it's a mountain with a tarp on it that is impressive.
We've budgeted for it, right?
I, I talked to Tim Barrett from the trucking company and I asked him about this and he said they have been concentrating on their northern supply and they now have that filled and now they're going to start trying to fill the Rockingham location. Which, you know, it comes in on rail, they also bring trucks down and, but from what I've gathered, there's no big pile, so.
I have no problem, I think we're going to at least go through three loads for the whole winter and you're asking for a budgeting for, this was in last year's budget, which has been stretched. I don't know yet.
Well, we can't mess around, so.
Right, so I, what would you, what do you think? Should we approve the third load?
We have the funds for it, it sounds very logical to do it now, God only knows what's going to happen in the market.
Right.
Well, okay, so I think that's, continue with the ordering and.
It was what, $87 a ton or something like that?
Yes.
87?
84.50.
84.50, okay. So that we didn't cap a dollar, cap a number of tons, we just.
On an average year, I think, I think we, we had to give them an estimated usage of footage and I think we were around 175 tons. So if we're at 16 to 17, we're, you know, we're in good shape for the winter.
All right, I think due to that concern, I think you, if you, I'll take care of this too.
Yeah, I did these to do the task for our region, so this would be.
Okay.
So we have, the second shed is now full and we have room to carry more salt. I took the leaf blower around after the wind and rain had knocked 98% of the leaves off. And boy, the thing is, it's impressive. It weren't so good. There's, there's places where you can't use it, where it's residential and people have already raked their lawns, so. But the places that we can use it, it just, it pays for itself and. Yeah, so it allowed you to be able to grade the road without pulling leaves in and messing up the road. Pine needles involved, so it really opened up a lot of opportunity. I actually, after the leaves were all blown, I took the grader out and just kind of touched everything up that was rough and just a one-way trip on every road and then one way back to the left side of the roads.
Okay, good.
Knowing that we're getting into freezing weather and hopefully things freeze into a good condition for plowing. Yeah, I've been cleaning up, we have had some poor tree issues with the wind, so cleaning up trees. I think since I last saw there, I took the sign off and painted it. It's not reflective, but.
Oh, the, the arrow sign, I did see that, that's up, yep.
Let's see. There's probably lots of little details. One of the things I wanted to talk about was the recycle bin there, the way we've been using the situation, but me and Doc had talked a little bit on that and.
I'll bring that up in my report real quick one.
Yeah, the covers you're talking about?
Yeah, and I also, it appears like it's filling up quicker and quicker in between phone calls. So that's something when we get ready to budget. So it wasn't doing like every seven days, but it appears like it fills up every five now.
At this time of year, it's kind of a lot.
And I'm not sure about the, this trucking end of it. It appears like they might need swamp, make sure to help. And when it first started monitoring it, it came like that afternoon or the next morning and now it's taken like three days to, from the call to the delivery. If it's near the weekend, it's five days, you know, get to the weekend and then off. So I just wanted to.
But just try to keep that area as clean as possible to prevent animals and things.
Sure, okay. And the other thing is the amount of non-recyclables that people are putting in there. I'm not sure if they, I've never seen a bill or heard how they bill and I'm wondering if we're getting charged for the stuff that gets put in that's not recyclable.
Guys, I mean.
Yeah, if we could, I don't know, it shows up on a bill. I know there's a trucking fee to exchange each.
Yeah, well, the trucking fee is, that's from the driver, but.
But once they sort it, do they charge it for anything that's non-recyclable that they have to? I was just questioning that.
Would Dan tell them?
What happens is they, if you can condemn the whole buckload if it's contaminated and it's not recyclable material, they're not going to handpick through hoses and buckets and window frames and, and toys. That this is a, that's the problem and this is why we put it on the agenda for the, the town to vote as a separate appropriation and we can discuss this again and they will vote yes or no, whether or not they want to continue to expend the money. We didn't spend as much last year as we thought we would. I'm not exactly sure where we're at this rate at the second, but in the meanwhile, nothing we can do except make sure that we keep it clean and.
So it sounds like we are in danger of having a what the recycle bin left in place until we find our own solution to, what, cleaning it up? Or will they take it and bill us more? Or, and who's going to, who's going to act on it to follow up on?
I don't know.
You know, I was collecting a lot of stuff at the town merge and then when we got alone, I would take it down and get a bill. But just monitoring, you know, if I'm cleaning up outside the recycle bin and looking and I'm seeing stuff that shouldn't be in there, and even with the new signage.
Which you did a good job on, it looks good.
They don't, you know, you trade past that sign and clothing and like the garden.
Well, maybe we should put up a sign, if you don't start jumping, we'll take the, take the dumpster away.
Well, I guess that raises a question of, A, should we relocate the camera that we currently have? Or B, should we purchase a second one?
Do you have a camera?
I would like to talk about that off, out of the meeting only because of the security concerns. Mark and I already talked about it when you all came in, I was here at 6 o'clock. Okay, so Triple T swap outs are, are 155 a swap out? And Triple T does that, that swap out? And I don't see here a, anything else from the recycling costs. They intend this and don't get a proposal, but.
They maybe figured that some of that.
Yeah, so maybe some of the next, next bill might go.
So I guess my question then is, are we going to wait till we get that bill to find out what's going to happen? Or do you want to cut it beforehand?
What do you mean, what's going to happen?
Well, I'm hearing, I may have misunderstood what was said in the last two minutes. It could be that, I was interpreting it that we don't know whether we're being charged for the contaminated items, the non-recyclable items that are in there. And so my first response would be we need to ask someone, but I'm hearing that we don't, we're going to wait for something to develop?
I have a feeling that Guy would want to answer that. Because he's been doing it for years before Mark took over. He might, Guy might have answered that.
All right, what I'm, what I was saying was that the, if you have a contaminated load, they're not going to give us any money for buying our recycling. But it's still that, you know, then it gets put into a dump, then it gets incinerated. But I was, you were saying David Jones or Guy or Dan Tattler would be better off to explain this, so.
I don't know how often we spend payment to them if it's.
All right, I'll check and put this on the agenda for the next time. We'll talk about contaminated loads and the recycling, okay? All right, good point. I think I'm going to bring this up real quick. I know this has to do with roads and highways. It was the concern about Harris Mill and the repairs. We approved $2,000, but Archie estimated it's closer to $5,500. And so we haven't done anything on it because it's quite high. And my question is, should, should I contact the person in concern and tell them that we wouldn't have to wait until another budget year or another better, better weather to do this? Is it extremely dangerous? There's a small, with a, with a small, with a signage that we can get made up and stapled soon for temporary to warn people or driveway markers or something? What would you suggest?
Again, I wish that Archie was here because it, it has some effect on snow plowing, you know? If the snow plow gets over too far and drops and gets caught on the pavement edge. But also currents that may flip backwards there and slip people in or, or skid into the pit.
As a, as an appraiser, I've gone around in Marlboro, Halifax, Swainham. They have a policy of where there's areas of danger, like I noticed when I went up Whitney Hill after I looked at Harris Hill, there are three locations on Whitney Hill that just drop off and there's a culvert. And at the end of those three, I think if I'm not mistaken. I'm wondering if it might assist in the fear that exists about the danger of it to just drive as pieces of wood, thin sticks of wood? Or I think Marlboro uses little thin trunks of small trees to cut them off, deal in it and pound them in, in the danger area so that it's an indicator to the plowing device and people and an indicator to the citizens that, you know, you should keep away from this area because there's a, there's a reason this state is here. And from a liability standpoint, does our insurance and situations like that require a sign? To relieve liability and if that, something does happen, which is another concern I would have. Since we know there's an issue there. So those are the two things I think that are most important, that are cheap, no cost. I assume that there, I saw that there had been sand that has come down. Uh, has uh come down the hill and filled in some portions of that. Uh, uh, I can, I understand it's probably a perfect solution. I assume that the five thousand dollar thing is a perfect solution. Is there anything that could be done? I mean, what what, the only way the drop off is gonna be eliminated if it's completely regraded. And uh it be re- graded on the lesser slope up to where the nec Adam ends. And uh, uh, so it, is that the only fix that?
Well.
I mean, you, yeah.
Uh, but when I, when I estimated a two thousand dollar thing. I was looking at it as the town doing it with a machine. Like, we already have the machine. It's a day, less than a day work.
Hmm.
Uh, couple loads of stone.
You talking about the four-wheel excavator that we have or?
Yeah, yeah, four-wheel excavator and then. And maybe two truckloads of stone that, you know, clean up the ditch and then line it with stone.
Yeah.
You know, pack it up against the the road shoulder and um that's probably my estimate with slowest.
But but you knew we didn't have a west excavator when you suggested that, cause that would be a next summer project.
Right, yes, yeah, so. So, yeah, to save money, uh, waiting would be the way to go within market.
Market, you have uh hu- uh orange fluorescent tape that you can put on the stakes?
Yeah.
By Mark, my flower.
It it may interfere with snow plowing because, you know, uh, you know, you. You plowed to the edge, but then as the snow banks get higher, they may get kicked over or knocked over.
Well, he can hit the sticks instead of the mailboxes, you're saying?
Right.
Well, that's another part of it. There are no mailboxes.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's it's, there's nothing that he's gonna have. The issue is he knows where they are. And he's already drawn a line by where his plow has gone to avoid the sticks. Uh, i- i- the likelihood of, and he senses probably gonna be focusing on that. More so than some of the other stretches of roads because there is a danger out there. I I think we can stretch it to a time where it's more important to us. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, no, I didn't uh, I didn't blow the leaves off in that, as I said, I went around town and first off, couldn't even do it there, but I. I kind of was under the assumption that the rain may explode. In the leaves, it may not.
Yeah, I agree.
Be erosion.
Yeah.
So I guess the 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 whole beginning, the main concern was land, the private owner up in there. His concern.
Harris Hill.
Yeah, Harris Hill was the fact that it's it's with undermining pavement and then it causes for destruction and pavement, but you know, as. Soon we're gonna have trees and everything's gonna be.
Hmm, yeah.
In that.
That could be something for that brick, mi- hazard mitigation.
Yeah.
Grant for for, that would be ideal.
Ball under.
And that.
Damage invasion, yeah.
Um, uh, you can buy, I know at Perkins, they're seventy-two inches. I just bought them this orange and gray reflective thin poles that you put into the grounds versus, which are. Which will be not as damaging to a plow truck. If they hit it, it would just break or pu- fold over versus a trunk, you know, something big. I don't know. It whatever you think is best, but if you could mark that verb.
Mark it.
Yeah, we're everything that is a hazard. Yeah. And we'll make a list of these that we need to remember for.
Yes.
Our, some of our plans.
Right, yes, to uh. Budget for them, you know.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Mark. Anything else?
Um.
We'll talk more about budget when we get into with Archie's tips to come by.
We can talk online, uh.
I'll tell you something.
All right, is there a time that you are available? I I don't know if you got the email that.
I did.
Brett Aldrich sent back. He said flexible Monday. Uh, just let him know the time.
What Monday was.
Twenty-second.
First.
Oh, twenty-first, sorry.
Yeah, there were two days and.
Fifteen days.
Yeah, I can make myself available.
Okay, the question is, what time does everyone wanna do this?
Um, I have any time, morning is fine. I'm gonna get it done with.
Ten o'clock, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ten o'clock on Monday?
Yeah, I'll invite.
Me here in this, at the conference room.
Uh, well, I I assumed you wanted to look at the road, but I can invite him here now to drive off.
We'll, 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 we'll.
Tell him, come here. Okay, so.
Otherwise, we'll, we'll stand and.
I I appreciate your the willingness to attend, Mark. I uh, I have no idea what this, what's gonna be thrown in our direction. And if we get some kind of cockamamie excuse, it doesn't make any sense. I'm gonna feel very positive about you being there to look at him or us and say. I don't understand. Can you clarify that or whatever the proper polite term is to.
Yeah, I mean, I. I'll give you our knowledge, you know.
Yeah, great. That's very much appreciated.
And and you know, Guy said, once you square away what's going on with the company, then he'll talk to us about. The best way of completing the two lanes that have not been completed, but let's work on this one problem at a time and um. So I don't, that's what he suggested. So I can tell him that on the twen- on the twenty-first, November twenty-first, we're gonna. Review that. Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
And we still have that check.
Yeah, as far as I know.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, um, Sam, anything about about highway grants report?
Uh, yeah, uh, we got the all states. Uh, let's see. I I've done a sheet that uh outlines some of the match money, some of the things to be considered for our budgeting. Uh, there's one other thing that I'd like to, it's two issues, but I can do it in one concept. Uh, we have a grant that on Hill Road that uh we need to close out. In 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 theory, uh, the town is supposed to do it on its own, uh, but Jeff, in the process of. Our discussion when he was here with Mark and myself, he offered, since he had in the past, uh, to help us settle it up, close it out. And looking at what's my role in this board is is becoming, um. And it would mean I would be trying to familiarize myself. With the process and essentially unless we take an option, which I'm gonna ask the board to consider and approve tonight. It would mean that I would be the person uh. Opening up, filing all the initial paperwork, defining the scope, et cetera, et cetera. Sending it in and then when it closes out, I would be the person closing it out. Uh, and and I know that o- others who have been here, who have been involved with the highway, uh, have not uh really entertained that. Uh, to the point where it's been historically, Jeff is Jeff Nugent of Wyndham is the guy that's been doing it all, okay? Uh, so, uh. I don't know how much I'm gonna be able to continue. I've got another year ahead. Uh, I would like to see uh an even division of work if possible or getting somebody on. And uh, and I, at this point, don't know what, you know, I I'd like to continue the second year. Uh, but I, even if I do, and I and I and, you know, I'm leaning toward it, um. It would mean that if I left, there'd be nobody to do it and and it and it's clear to me that, um. My first introduction to some of the T sixty forms, et cetera, it's clear to me that nobody, nobody has been involved in that. Other than pretty much Jeff Nugent doing it for people in the town. So, uh, so that I don't leave anybody high and dry. I don't want to leave, let anybody, lead anybody to believe that. I'm gonna do it ad infinitum forever and ever and the the most logical and fair thing to do. In light of the fact that uh that needs to be closed out before the end of the year. We got budget stuff. We've got to look into the auditing stuff being done timely and I've offered to do the town report.
Mm-hmm.
So that I'm, I'm starting to feel just stressed as time is coming on, in addition to what I normally do, which seems at times prolific. So what I would like to do is ask that the Town and Brookline take Wyndham Regional up. On executing a supportive work tech sheet whereby up to fifteen hundred dollars. They would take care of the initial work of this grant that's coming up for this coming year. It's a twelve thousand five hundred dollar grant. I think our, our match is three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars and and just let them do the whole thing.
Amen.
And the story.
We, amen. We don't have any administrative assistance.
And you can use the grant to pay whatever we're billed from up to a capital on their own. So, so that's, that's, so I will, so that's, that's where I'm coming from. So the one that, the one that we just are in the process of hopefully finishing out. Uh, one of the ladies from Winnebago will be up this coming week, Thanksgiving week of all times. And she wants to go over Hill Road, she wants to go over any other segment in town that we, that you have done this past year, so she can upgrade the map. She's willing to do that.
We had sent Jeff the the written GPS and the summaries of those updates. But by now she wants to photograph them, so that would be.
I I think.
Okay.
I would make that a point.
So is there a day next week? You don't have to answer now, maybe after the meeting or I can call you between now and Friday. And and say if you come up with time that you can handle this in and 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 assuming that I don't have anything going on that day, that you're free.
Yeah.
Set something up for this coming week or the week after to to take care of all of that. So she can close it out. Uh, it has to be done by December thirty-first and they like it sooner than.
I'm all for getting it completed and I want it available unless something should.
Okay.
You know, try to show up on the complex of work.
Yeah, so I have already filled in this form that I want the board to, okay.
Okay.
I've recorded the Town and Brookline. You can take a look at it. I've signed it as an administrative highway person. I dated it today's date. And if it's okay with you, then I uh.
I got it.
I I would say that I would like to scan it in for the records here in the town and and also send this.
Yeah, I approve of having Wyndham Regional assistance, supportive work and technical assistance for our grants. Uh, th- this is perfect. Thank you very much, Sam.
Welcome, Jeff. Good job.
Okay, thank you. So that's, that's, um, uh, I guess. Unless I'm forgetting something, I could be, who knows? That's all I have to say to you. Thank you.
And we see Melissa, we see that you're here. We're just gonna, we're just finishing up a couple of loose ends and then we'll go into budget shortly.
Oh, sure, no worries. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, building, uh, okay, anything else, Sam? Yes, you have, you you set up quite a nice set of spreadsheets. I was. Putting them together this, this in the last month.
Yeah, that that's the uh updated uh grant summary of history and current.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the oldest at the bottom, the newest at the top. Uh, I've updated it, the things that are in it, and Melissa was sent a copy as well, so. Melissa and Judy and the board have access to it. Uh, I know that uh. Guy Tanza had created one, so I've kept him in the loop as well, so he knows what's going on should someone come in and ask any question or encounter. So the only thing I think we need to modify is, that is for grants and and ARPA is. Kind of a grant, but usually with grants.
You pay it back.
Or you get a reimbursement or there's a match or whatever and and ARPA doesn't match it. I mean, I could put it in a separate place on the sheet. Or I can simply do another sheet for ARPA monies only, where there may be a delineation of wh- what it went for. And so forth, so that any disbursements that are made, I can track and follow.
If you could separate it out, this way, if we have borrowed or moved ARPA money from ARPA account. To salaries and then if we move some back, we just keep track of it so that we know the sum total of of of.
Right.
Spending or obligations to that, that would be ideal.
Specifically with Mark, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay, I'll do that.
Excellent, all right, yes. I can understand that ARPA's will, it is a little different, yeah. Okay.
That was my major concern. And it, there, there is help with other, with state and Wyndham Regional for certain things, Wyndham short terms. And if we enter this agreement long term, which will think, I think, make uh my life. Uh, and the stresses and strains of the, that on top of the normal, everyday thing that just keeps popping up for.
Yeah.
For you and I in particular.
Right.
Uh, that uh, it uh, it it gives me a little easier sleep at night.
Absolutely, and I I do think that it's appropriate, it's not an extension. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, um, building commissioner.
Okey-dokey. Mr. Bills and I finished the work that we needed to do for the wall pit from the tile. It was done clearly before November seventh. Definitely is very pleased. We probably wouldn't hear from the inspector for about four years, so that's out of what I hear. I called coding code again about servicing the boilers and. I can't catch you since I've I've had business with them for thirty years to come take a look at my boiler. I'm really on the origin. Uh, nobody has any help. Every five minutes, somebody's quitting. Uh, the same people are not there the second time. So as far as coding code goes, I would write straight to Tucker. He's one of, or he ended the work. The last winter, kind of reminding him in a nice way, we spent eleven thousand dollars. I don't want this. That's so people are pulling up on me and has him in service. I said it all in a nice way. And she's keeping me in mind so that you can try and fit Sean or somebody to get over here and take a look at it. One thing that I've noticed in 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 my normal look scene every week when I go over there is that the ammonia hole seems to be staying open. That ammonia hole is where the vents are, that opens up before the gas comes on and it seems to be staying open. And that's an adjustable thing. And I'm not adjusting them. I'm I'm trying to get them over here to do it. Lastly, Mark and I are doing a lot of, a lot of maintenance between the two buildings. And we'll, we'll update you as we do, but the thing we're going to do next is that room where the air conditioner is, so we don't have a freezing issue.
That's up in the attic?
Yeah, Mark and I've already talked about. We have a little little plan and within the next, uh, within the next three weeks or so, we should. We should make a dent in the things that we were thinking about. Oh, and since, as part of the building thing, you're just gonna come up about. Marcus suggesting that we put a camera here and a second camera down.
Not gonna say we're gonna put them.
Oh, we're not, cause, oh, we're gonna, no, my house?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, that's fine. I find, I'm sorry. Yes, later. That's, and that's it.
All right, thank you very much. And let us know about coding code, cause that's a little disturbing.
Well, waiting for our bill for their service to bring in. I haven't seen that yet.
Question? Yes. I do get online the Red Bull reporter. And there have been a number of ads uh from Sandry out of Rainfield. Who has been a large entity for years, uh, that I I don't know if they'd be interested in taking over the school boilers or not? No?
No, I can't tell you why. I'll give you a real quick, quick answer. They went to commercial buildings.
Oh.
I swear to God, this is a year ago when I tried to get them for a service to do that building. But I can't even get, I've had, they've done business with them for thirty-two years.
Sandries or?
Sandries.
Okay.
And I can't get, I'm having a hard time getting them up here. And I, and they know it. They know that I bought oil and it serviced my system two thousand.
The quoting code is supposedly the company in charge of the heating system over there. We had agreed that we did not have other companies.
Correct.
Change things around, so uh.
If something happens, it's it's off the charts. The pressure goes on. I've been nice to this point, but it'll be like, you guys need to get your.
Well, we, we.
Butt over here. We spent eleven thousand dollars on it. So like, let's go. I don't care about anybody else.
I have a, I have a sense.
Now, we'll get nasty.
The fact that there is a second heating system there.
They don't know it.
They, they weren't involved.
They don't know it.
Anything about that.
They haven't seen it.
They haven't been in the.
They has not been in that building since they were installed.
Okay.
Unless they saw them driving by, but no, they had no.
How is that, is this working?
They're happy, they're happy, they're happy. Okay.
All right, um.
So you have any more questions, the ladies there? So I'm keeping an eye on that boiler room. Well, I'm keeping an eye on that boiler room. That has got me a little annoyed, but whatever. We'll, we'll just take answers here and then we'll, we'll finish that.
All right, we're just gonna finish up on these things.
You wanted to do, right?
Yep, um, oh, well, right now, uh, we can, we can do town clerk report.
So do you.
Right, okay, Guy? We are, uh, we are, we are right there. Eight, item eighty, you are on town clerk report, budget suggestions, requests, questions. So if you wanted to go over your budgetary concerns and then we'll finish up on the other reports. Go ahead.
Guy?
Yes.
Okay, you have, uh, you wanted to add, you wanted to discuss what budgetary needs the um town office requires for next year for us to put in the budget?
Uh, yeah, I I guess at this point I would just like to, to mention the fact that our computers are very old and very slow. And uh, we have four of them and they're, I think, anywhere from eight to twelve years old. And I think it's time that we consider replacing them because um. Uh, they're just non-functional. I mean, I I guess they're functional, but uh, they're antiquated.
Have you uh any idea, you're just. Have you uh, any idea, you're just, our monitors and that are new, but you're saying the CPU units themselves?
Um, I think at this point, you know, I I'm considering, uh, you know, I'm looking at towers, we don't need monitors.
Right, towers.
We can probably uh, get a a good tower anywhere between six and eight hundred dollars. I'm a big Dell fan, um, I like the way they perform, I've had a lot of success with them. The town has had a lot of success with them, and um, I think it's time that we start, hello?
Yes.
We're all listening.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, I I don't know what happened, I, uh, are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, I, there was a little, something happened. At any rate, so that's one of the things I think that should be considered. Um, other than that, uh, I've been really careful with supplies and so forth. Because I use the town credit card and go to Walmart in Hinsdale. And uh, I can get better deals on paper and supplies than I can get at uh, home, at the office supply or Staples. So um, and I've also been able to save the town some money by negotiating a contract with the printer company. Uh, from, we went from a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month to ninety-five dollars a month for the lease. So um, you know, I I think the town is is done very well under these conditions with the COVID and everything else. I think we've been frugal, I think we've been careful, um, and I I think, you know, to wait much longer for updates might not be a good idea.
All right, so you're looking at approximately three thousand dollars in additional added to the budget that was approved last year for.
Uh, right, but if you if you notice on my budget, or if you look on a budget, you'll see that we've only spent two thousand dollars this year. And uh, basically, I think if we up the the um, budget by a thousand dollars. We can be frugal enough, unless postage gets crazy, but we could be frugal enough to get away with that and be able to get the new computers.
Okay, so you're saying that we only need to increase the budget, your line item, approximately a thousand dollars, and we would be able to upgrade our computer servers?
Yes, I I I firmly believe that.
All right, very good. Anything else, Guy, that you wanted to share with us?
Uh, well, I I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the select board, uh, the Board of Civil Authority. For all the help that everyone did, including Dave Jones and um. Um, Ma- uh, I'm sorry, Paul Madelinski and Samar Swick for helping make the uh, election go as smoothly as it did. It was a challenging election, but we had two hundred and eighty-two voters in the town, which represents about sixty-one percent. All the results were on the website the night of the election or early morning. So um, I just wanted to thank you all, because I know I didn't thank you uh, the way I should have when you left, but I think we were all tired, it was a long fourteen hour day. But uh, I think we've done very well, and um, I'd also like to thank Melissa Brown. For um, her delinquencies are down to less than thirteen hundred dollars, and she's done a great job there. So um, I think the town is in good shape, but um, going forward, I'm looking at, you know, increases um. Of of everything we do, uh, is is costing us more money, and I'm not sure how a small town is gonna survive, but I guess we'll keep trying.
Well, Guy, thank you again, I know it was a lot of work setting up, and you had every supply available to us. The only thing that was a problem was the location of the pencil sharpener, but other than that, I think it's.
Well, again, thank you, it's really been a pleasure.
Yeah, thank you, Guy, it was, uh, you gotta, you have a good handle on things like that, so appreciate it very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, so we'll we'll note that change or note that when we discuss the budget for the that part of the fund, appreciate it. There's not anything else, I'll move on to the next item? You good?
I'm good, yes.
All right, very good, thank you. Um, I'll go on to do my uh, select board report, I just wanted to get on the record that there was, you know, concern about the vandalism of the town. Sandwich board sign that indicated the date of the voting, you know, someone got lots of fun changing the words around to both slightly obscene. Um, but some residents wa- walked over and tried to fix it to the best of their ability, that's a problem. And as Mark had pointed out, there's also been a lot of abuse of the recycling container, what people are putting in there. And we do have informative signs there, uh, however, we might need to increase some additional security um, there as well. Um, I'm gonna continue on, the other thing that we talked about at the last board meeting. And we came in to do the Department of Public Services Risk Assessment Survey, it was a little bit more complicated than we thought. We could handle, and I asked Melissa Brown to do it, and she did it very quickly. And submitted it and sent us each a copy of it, I was in contact today with the uh, the state rep. And uh, sent her, let her know if everything is up and running, and that was with the brick grant, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, we have uh, it from twenty twenty, um, and so that's for our hazard mitigation. Uh, update for our hazard mitigation plan, which I was confusing with the local emergency management plan, so that that was just my old bit. Um, Melissa also sent to us the Ramonda Agency of Transportation fiscal year twenty twenty-three subrecipient assessment. Um, which was submitted in the beginning of March, appreciate that, there was a lot, there's a lot of reports, I guess, that goes on that. I, we didn't know that went on when Samaro or treasurer would do it, and then it comes to my my email, I'm not sure. What it is, so I appreciate everybody's help when we divvy up these these uh, uh, assignments, but other than that, I have um. Nothing else except to continue with our select board meeting. Is there any other men, a sleep order discussion from the select board, Mr. Mallow?
Okay, it's good, Melissa, you can hear me, Melissa?
I can, yes.
Okay, what I'm pertaining to is I've got a situation where Mark can get a uh, an IRA with his eight oh two credit union. In Townsend, uh, I had spent some time yesterday talking to the manager, and basically. How it's set up is that Mark would have to open, would have to open a very simple form, open an account of their mark. And minimum deposit is five hundred dollars. Now, saying that, original opening amount, original opening amount, if it had been Edward Jones, it would have been five thousand dollars. Um, and saying that, you're gonna be getting a a gross check for nine hundred dollars in business, yes, for your vacation pay that we owe you for. So, we'll talk about the details, most of your business, but we can talk about the details more thoroughly later as far as what to do. Uh, about that, um, I'm glad Melissa's here, because in case I say something stupid, Melissa, you can tell me if I am. But this is, this is for year end, June thirty, and you have up to a thousand dollars that you can get. But you have to put in the money first. As a match, you wanna explain that to us, Guy?
Yeah, um, I'd like to uh, bring the board's attention to the invoice number one that I passed out before the meeting started. And invoice number one can be modified or edited, but I'd like to get it done before, obviously before December. It says the Brookline Select Board authorizes a payment of nine hundred dollars to E. Mark Bills as per the agreement made and voted on at a special meeting held. On Thursday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-one. The payment of nine hundred dollars can be broken down to thirty dollars an hour for thirty hours, which is the maximum number of hours authorized for one week's work for E. Mark Bills. As the highway supervisor for the town of Brookline, this is known as vacation pay. Attached is a copy of the agenda and the minutes in which that was approved by the select board back in eight August of twenty twenty-one. Um, I do understand that this payment, vacation pay, does require the uh. Uh, taxes to be taken out of that, correct? Correct, Melissa?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, so um, uh, I can modify this invoice to say uh, uh, taxes.
Nine hundred dollars minus taxes?
Nine hundred dollars minus appropriate tax uh, tax deductions. And and what what are, what are, besides taxes, what gets taken out of salary?
Oh, I think uh, social security, FICA, possibly um.
Medi, federal, state.
Yeah.
So so how, what's, what's a good, what's a good word to use instead of listing out all of those things?
I would just say state and federal taxes.
There you go. Do, would, is Mark being subject to unemployment taxes as well?
Um, no, well, no, those wouldn't come out of his paycheck, those just come out of the VLCT. Or, yeah, the VLCT dues that you guys pay.
Okay, all right.
That's a business.
Not the dues, but the invoice.
Okay.
Like a weekly amount.
All right, so I would like the select board's permission once edited um, and retyped. Um, that that this is an approvable invoice that you might stop in in the next few days, I'll let you know, I'll put it on the counter, I'll put it in a select board mailbox. And you can sign, the third person to sign it, please put it in Judy's mailbox so that it will be invoiced.
Me's box.
The inbox.
Okay.
Okay, I also wanted to make a point of invoice number two.
We should let Judy know that that's for payroll and not for accounts payable.
Yes, I'll put it, okay, payroll, it does say payroll, okay. Uh, invoice number two that I typed up again, it has to be modified slightly, it says the Brookline Select Board authorizes a payment of blank. To the eight oh two credit union IRA account owned by E. Mark Bills. As per the agreement made and voted on at a special meeting held on Thursday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-one. The payment can be broken down to be equal to, but not more than five percent of the gross income earned between September first. And June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, I'm not gonna mention the gross amount, but it's written down, what gross amount, and then what five. Yeah, and what five percent is equal to, the town will ma- max the contribution E. Mark Bills makes in his private IRA account. With eight oh two credit your credit union up to a certain amount, I have it written down here. So, once you get a IRA open, please let let us know what what our match is. And um, so that you, so that we can provide the invoice to the treasurer to match it. So this this is, this is invoice one that we were just talking about, and then this is the suggested invoice number two.
And we'll have to know whether this is a Roth or a traditional IRA, because they're taxed differently.
Correct.
Correct, and so like, once they open it, they're gonna have to come in and share that, Bruce has offered to help uh, coordinate that with the, with the treasurer's office.
Yeah, whatever we have to do. Mark?
Yeah.
I want to really be clear, this is really important, you're being given, no, you're being earned, you weren't given anything. You earned your vacation pay, but you're gonna have to open up the the account with five hundred bucks. You are basically.
Or whatever he wants us to match.
That's correct, so whatever you put in there, we we can match up to the first, to the thirty of the figure of a thousand twelve dollars.
Not enough, that's the good part.
Okay, sorry, well, it just, I didn't say it's an income, so whatever, but you'll have a copy this morning.
He does, I just.
Got any questions, we'll wait. Uh, does Melissa have any concerns about it?
So so this invoice number two, if I can ask a question, is is purely for the arrears that we haven't done yet?
Correct.
For the first year, and and this will, that will fall into this year's, okay, yes, before December, correct?
I'm assuming that you're.
Next year will be the same time next year.
Which one are you talking about?
Number two.
So so this one I.
That's the June thirty.
I'm sorry.
Correct, this is, this is for last year, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, June thirtieth is still in the year twenty twenty-two, so still, we're in the same twelve month, twenty twenty-two year.
Okay, okay, I I was thinking. Okay.
Yeah, this time now, this full year, we would like to be, yeah, in half.
When we pay them, it's.
Yeah, that share, hopefully, we won't have to delay.
Right.
We won't have to delay.
Right.
There's other things I could ask, but I won't pick up and, we can talk about this.
Right, I will put on the agenda invoice number two for the second, for our next board meeting. If you have opened the IRA, we can then clarify that at that time.
You need to see Kayla, you know her, don't you?
Yeah.
She knows you, she's the manager, she knows you, yes, we don't know, lady, God. Uh, so I, well, about the numbers itself, we'll do that by the way.
Okay, any other reports or discussions from the select board at this time, if not, we will move into the budget planning session. All right, now we'll move into the budget planning session.
Good morning, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mark, you work hard, you learn, you deserve it. Need to take care of good people.
Yep, that's a true.
Okay, um, so we're looking at item seven, budget planning session, approximately forty-five minutes, so we should go till about eight thirty. Um, highway roads budget, first of all, I made some notes here, and you can say yes or no, I'm not even looking at the checklist. But um, do we have any changes in the staffing needs, are we going to consider financing or or budgeting for assistance from Mark? Mark, if you need someone to work with, I know you're, you you've had your dad, but.
Yeah.
He's not as available.
Yeah, and with your mom, yeah, so um, I I.
Way to put this, I think I got this right, because we discussed this, I think we need to try and consider with Mark, somebody that will work with him. I, sorry, Mark, I have a real problem with you going out all hours and not having somebody at your back. You can have all cell phones in the world, if you trip and hurt yourself or cut yourself with a chainsaw, you got nobody, believe me, I know this. But anyway, with that intent, we've been kind of talking for the last year, year and a half, if I can, and I've always wanted to have you have some help. No matter how we do it, and if you have somebody in mind, I'm stepping out of the side of the other two people here. But if you have somebody in mind that that we've considered, that we, that could help us, I hope you wanna put on a temporary basis, not temporary basis. A re, a less hours basis, let's put it that way, that would be great.
An assistant work, an assistant for the road, yes, someone to assist you in times when you need a second person. Um, and we need to consider the cost of that when we're doing our budget, so that's bring that to your attention. Uh, we currently, there's three things I have under salary and staffing, and one is the road commissioner stipend. Um, and also highway grant supervisor stipend, I know, uh. Stan, you've been doing an awful lot of work, and I certainly don't think that the town uh, can afford to to lose you and and all the work you're doing. Even though some of it will go to to help, some, Winnebago Regional, we've authorized some help in certain areas. But I would like to see an additional uh, stipend for the grant supervisor, which is five hundred dollars. I'm also going to ask when we do the building commissioner first stipend as well, it's not, you can refuse it. I think we need to put it in.
I think this man right here does huge amount of work.
But I'm saying these stipends, you, just like our chair, uh, select board, you can, you can refuse stipend. You can donate it back to the town, or donate it to a charity of your choice, or or or.
Keep it.
Yeah, or keep it, um, but I do think it's something that I want the select board to consider when we're doing our.
Okay.
That, very other quick, never gonna go through the list.
Stan, you have any? You've been kind of shut out of this, but you have anything, any opinion?
I I, nothing that I'm gonna express at the moment.
I I had made a note too, to add to the budget, I think all of you put in so many hours and you get nothing out of it. And like was mentioned, there's not many volunteers coming forward anymore for these town jobs. And I think that there should be some reward of some sort for you guys for all the hours you spend pursuing.
We do get a stipend.
Yeah, but.
Not much.
But that, that does. When you begin to cover an amount of hours that you're out here working for the town.
Well, one of the other things that at some point we hope to be able to hire an administrative assistant, which will take some of that relief off of us. And I, I do think that if this town does not go for that, that you're gonna find even fewer people willing to 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 stretch their their personal time.
I just feel that maybe the stuff, the hourly rate that you should get for some of your.
That's, we're elected, so we, I I'm not gonna look at salaries on it. However, if there are some grants and the brick grant, one of the things that we can do, just like, because it's FEMA. Is we can, if we're working on a hazard mitigation, we can keep track of. Is we can, if we're working on a hazard mitigation, we can keep track of our hours. And that would come out of the grant, we could be paid from the grants. So that.
That's a, that's a thought.
That, that's, that, that's how that would work.
That's a thought, but.
That's a little bit of, take that, but not nearly, you know.
I appreciate that.
My, my, when I, I'm, when that's perfect for your state.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
My, uh, my only, my dear point at this time is that I, I'm of the opinion that. Uh, everyone who works for the town, in terms of being an employee, deserves uh. A sufficient adequate income. And uh, I have specific numbers, I've got the uh. Budget rates, well, this is for two twenty-one, which is uh twenty twenty-one. And I know we've upgraded a little bit since then, but I, I would, when we get to talking specific amounts. I know since we are a member of VLCT, and we filled out, uh, Melissa was kind enough to fill out the report for them. About the town's employees, that we match up our people with um. The range of salaries that's applicable to their role within the town. You know, I, I, yes, we as select board members work, but I know Mark's, you know, he is alone, he's done an awful lot. Uh, I know Melissa's adapting and learning, and she's here listening in the evening.
Thank you.
When it could be her free time, uh, she's responsive, almost at any time. Uh Judy's been extremely helpful, and I, and I, and I, and Gwen, I, I would feel. That um, I, I wouldn't wanna take advantage of any of the individuals that I've mentioned. And I, I would ask that we keep our mind open for increases in their salary.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they deserve it. I know Guy and, and was, uh, and Gwen have done stuff, uh, you know, or raked. Around the stairways out front, and a number of other things that, little things, trash, whatever, it takes from the day. And, and it's an added effort, it's an honor they've bestowed on the citizens to do it. And, and I think there needs to be a little bit of respect for that. So, I, I'm just asking, we keep our, we keep our eyes open to the possibility of. Uh, paying everyone an appropriate salary for the responsibility that they have, not just how they're performing their job.
Alright, well said.
One last point.
Go ahead.
To put, to put to bed. In the nine years I've been on the board, the last two years, hell on wheels. That's a good way to put it. Uh, and people have left because of it, I'm sure. And now we're down to three people, and Mark, I appreciate what you said. Uh, but to tell you this quite truth, truthfully, rather than having a stipend or more money in life, it seems more like help. That's where I'm at with it. And I don't think it's gonna happen, but I would be more than happy to entertain your thoughts. Of what you just said as well, as a consideration, and we'll work that, that angle, because it's getting to be too much.
It's, it's a lot, it's a lot.
No.
You know, and it's a thing.
No, excuse me?
Yeah, sorry.
I wanna really be emphatic about this. It's too effing much for everybody. And if this town doesn't step up, somebody's gonna have to step up. Let it be known. It's here from Bruce. People don't start helping. Next page will be turned.
Alright, well, Michelle.
That's the last thing I have to say about this.
So now at this point, we should open up our budget sheets and start to go through the uh forms. Now, I know I have a budget sheet amongst all my stuff.
Good, this is chat. The point.
Alright, do you have yours?
No, I don't.
You don't?
I, I couldn't find it. I don't know what I did. Uh, my, my apologies. I looked around, I don't think, I don't, don't think I actually, I can make the topic a little clearer. That is?
That is it. We didn't, we didn't change any of the numbers on it, but that is the uh, the blank question.
Okay, so we're not going through the general, right?
We're going through the.
The road fund.
Road fund.
That's all I need to know. I'll find it, I don't know where I.
Sorry to hear that.
Things happening. Don't get old. Always do.
That's good.
That's good. It's not a question, I'm a professional person, I assume, eleven thousand dollars and. And then after a while, there's the next guy. Really pretty nice one.
I'm sure they're not getting anything, whatever the system is.
But other things about my allergies too.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, well, Melissa, I, I printed out all these reports. And thirty-five pages here, and seventeen four pages there. Of course, I have to complain, the type is so small, it's very hard to read, but um. I know, I know we have really spent quite a bit of our highway budget and a lot of our surplus. Because of the non-reimbursed FEMA expenses. I'm just really would love to. Get a heads up, we're really going into a devil's hole at any point during the next few months because of uh. Whatever, just collection of taxes and everything else. Yes.
Well, um, right now, and I'm gonna make an adjustment on Friday. Is, it stands that there's like thirty-two thousand in the highway fund that's available. But I'm gonna transfer over taxes of another approximately fifty-seven thousand, so that'll bring it back up to eighty thousand, little more.
Nine, eighty-nine thousand.
Eighty-nine thousand, thirty-two?
Thirty-two, fifty-seven.
Yeah, thirty-two, and I'm gonna transfer fifty-something over roughly, I'm not sure the exact figure.
Now, when you say taxes, that's coming from the real estate taxes?
Yep, so usually in the past, I noticed they've been doing it twice a year, but I'm instead trying to do it every quarter. So it just kinda makes the highway fund a little more level and not look so bad.
So at some point down the road, will that need to be made up in the tax account?
Nope, because that's what you guys budgeted for, so it's just gonna go from the general fund over into the highway fund like it's supposed to. Cause all the taxes get deposited in the general fund. So I just need to do a transfer over into the highway fund. And then it'll start bouncing back and looking a little better too, if I do it quarterly instead of every six months.
Is the money, is the money that we raised by taxation, that goes to the highway fund?
For the highway fund.
For the highway fund, so she's doing it four times a year, went after the.
Rather than half year.
Rather than half year.
That's great. That makes a lot of sense.
So we're looking at the summer highway salaries. We did do a significant increase this past year. We did not consider uh additional manpower. So, I don't know, how, how do you wanna do this?
Okay.
Yeah, I can run through the, the titles.
Summer highway salary, basically, with Mark.
Correct.
Yeah, um.
But you got down fifty-two thousand dollars in the budget, which is, which is high, considering, I can't say any numbers. Considering what's on invoice.
Well, the base salary times fifty-two weeks is uh forty-six eight.
Right, I remember from last year.
So, and this is, we apparently, we budgeted fifty-two. I think there was perhaps several thousand dollars for Mark's dad that over the course of the year materialized. Which, from memory, seems to be how we got to fifty-two.
Maybe.
So, uh, I would suspect that any help that Mark has would probably require. He and/or the board doing a job description, finding out what kind of things that it's going to entail. Uh, and looking at the responsibility and then setting a pay rate. Uh, I'm not sure what that would appropriately be, but until we kinda do that. It, it might be hard to estimate. Uh, it might be a slight increase on this, but I wouldn't. It depends on how, how often you need that part-time person to be available and, and work, you know?
Is this something like, would we say something like a ten percent increase in it, or a five percent, or?
Can't mention it.
No, they're not, the maximum number of hours we're not worked. We don't have a piece of equipment for him to make up that salary yet. Because you can't work and you don't have the equipment.
Okay.
Yes?
Can I just add something? I'm looking at the summer salaries at sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-five at the end of period five.
Okay.
It appears that you're on track for that fifty thousand dollars, uh, that you had appropriated last year.
Well, then we're not.
But so, we're, we're, but we're looking at, um, do we need to increase it or additional help?
We don't know that.
We don't know yet. Alright, so let's move on then, with this.
Are we gonna have this person, this is Mark, a certain maximum hours of the year, a certain maximum hours in summer months? Uh, you know, we've gotta give some thought to that.
Yeah, it's a coordination thing involved, and it's gonna involve a mark too.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna leave that open.
Okay, we'll leave that out.
So basically, we're not changing that right at this point. We might be adding.
I've got a question, Mark, next, so it's to be determined.
Right. Alright, the next item was summer highway employee mileage. Um, it looks like it was the actual, and what was budgeted is within twenty cents. Uh, but I do, one thousand four hundred ninety-nine point eight.
Oh, yeah, okay.
One thousand five hundred. So I'm thinking with the cost of some of these, uh, with the cost of the federal highway reimbursement went up. Uh, I think that we need to bring that number up at least two hundred and fifty dollars, I would think.
Okay. You don't have this.
Seventeen fifty?
Seventeen fifty.
Okay.
Okay. Um, summer highway sal, this is grants.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't know what that was.
Melissa, what it was, uh, two seven ten ten point thirteen.
I believe it's salaries for grants.
Salaries for grants.
It doesn't look like anybody's budgeted anything for it, but somebody slotted sixty dollars for.
Now, one thing of that is the uh money that was spent for VLTC. These, well, for the sixty dollars that got put in for warrant seventeen.
Did you put that?
Uh, well, there's no employee that deals on the, in summer grants. That's, you know, I, I, I guess one could consider the grants administrator to be a person doing this, but. Uh, you know, uh, but I'm not an employee, if that's anything I can think of. I don't, I'm not sure why that is there.
I'm not sure.
I don't think it sounded in the la, prior year's budgets.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from, to be honest, but the only thing I could think of is unless somebody was using it. When they were doing the matching kind for the grants. I don't know if you used Mark's hours for matching kind or something.
Have no idea.
Don't know. Uh, however, if we do hire, we, we are hiring Wyndham Regional Commission to help with. The technical assistance for grants, and that budget should be. If one thousand, what was the number?
It's a, up to fifteen hundred dollars.
So, I think we should put fifteen hundred dollars in that line item, if that's where we're going to be paying Wyndham Regional for that assistance.
Summer bill.
Can change the name on it if you want, and just make it like WRC.
Uh, yeah, Grants Administration Fee.
Uh, assist, technical assistant, yeah.
Are you talking about the third line down?
Yes.
And we're changing it from sixty to fifteen hundred something percent?
Correct.
Yeah, and you, and that's what, like what Marcus is gonna come out of the, the grant?
Possibly, but we should budget for it.
Okay.
Cause if it, if it, I can't imagine it would exceed fifteen hundred, but uh. That's, that's a whole nother issue. The, uh, we've agreed to allow Wyndham Regional's representative to handle. Uh, grants and aid, uh, road improved, funded road improvements. And we can take up to fifteen hundred dollars out of the grant to pay for their providing that service to the town. So, there, there, uh. There will be an expense, an initial expense, thinking this through, and comparing it to the other, the one other grant I've done. There would be an initial payment for the full expense, and. Let's see, the grant is gonna pay, will be used to pay for the fifteen hundred dollars out of the total of the cost. And then there's gonna be a match.
And the match is what we never budgeted for, we never.
Never budgeted for matches. Yes, that's right.
And you gotta have the money up front too, to pay for the grant.
Wait, I don't know what the others are yet. I'm sorry, yeah, Melissa?
You're gonna have the money up front too, usually, before you even uh do the grant.
Correct.
And we have others?
Well, they, they, yeah, I, I think that might be part of the documentation required upfront. In order to proceed along with the grant process, that they're, they, I think they do require proof, proof that we can pay for. But, but like our uh, salt and shed grant, we pay for everything upfront. Then we have to file the uh, request for reimbursement uh, at some point, and that's dictated by Wyndham Regional. They tend to wanna do it one time through the year, uh, at least that's my one-year experience with them. Uh, and then, and then we get money back. Uh, but they're out of that, is, they don't give everything, cause we got a twenty percent match.
Yeah, you'd only get eighty percent back, you don't get everything back each year.
Right, so here, I, I guess from my standpoint, I'd be dependent upon you to advise us and me. How that best works out for an accounting process.
Yeah, you know, it's a tricky thing. We've just been lucky over a new thing, that we've had the extra money to pay for these grants ahead of time. To keep doing it, cause we've had a large reserve.
But we don't have that kind of reserve.
We don't have a reserve. We also have other grants that we hope to apply for, including our local hazard mitigation. Grant, which is a seventy-five twenty-five FEMA grant. We don't know how much that will be either, or I think it's like twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars, I do know that. So.
And we actually agree.
That, that's another, yeah, it was seven twenty twenty, so that's another four thousand.
Okay, what do we need to do then? Alright, look.
So it's three to four thousand dollar one, uh, grant. Match right there for the hazard mitigation grant, so this is what I'm concerned about, we don't budget for these things.
Okay, what we should do is list them, put a number on them.
We don't have a whole list, because they, they throw them at us here and there.
Okay, could we, uh.
So we have to say no to some grants.
It is what it is, I mean, what are we gonna do? Put fifty thousand dollars aside? I mean, we gotta have some kind of a number. And we can't just turn away all the grants.
No, but I do think that we, I do think that we should consider budgeting at least a fifteen hundred dollars for the. Wyndham Regional, and possibly another three thousand for another match to the, to the hazard mitigation grant. That would be, make it forty-five hundred dollars, and um, we have a, a budget stabilization. Twenty thousand dollars for an emergency, if we need to match things up with.
That's true.
I don't know, how do you feel about putting um, uh, grant match?
I think the process is valid, I guess, but that down near the bottom of the expenses for uh roads. We have uh WRC and BBR grants expense. Uh, and I am wondering if that is the match, that's the expense? Or is that the initial amount we pay out, and then we need to resettle that with money coming back? And the fact that ultimately there was a cost, which was the match. Again, from the accounting standpoint, we need to make sure we get those bases covered.
Yeah, all the expenses can go right in there, whether it's the match, or whether it's the grant itself. Because when you have it all together in the end, you need to make sure you spent the whole grant amount plus your match. In order to get a hundred percent back. If you don't spend the whole grant amount plus the match, then you always only get eighty percent back.
So if that's the case, then we don't even need uh Wyndham Regional Services. Changing summer highways uh, something grants. Uh, two seven ten ten point one three, we may not need that, is that what you're saying? Because the down below category of expenses covers that already?
No, those are like the actual expenses, so if you're working on, say, a road, and you put materials in for one grant. You want that to go into that line item and label them, so you know which they are, cause they're gonna need copies of checks and everything now.
Yep.
So that's not a grant match down below, that's just our expenses.
Apparently.
Yeah, we don't have.
Well, if there's grant expenses.
Right, well.
Yeah, you can put the match in there if you want, or you can put the um, whole thing in, whatever you wanna do.
Okay.
Cause there is nothing budgeted at all, anywhere.
Okay, so I, I guess.
It's kind of a placeholder really for me, so when you guys go to. Kind of a placeholder really for me, so when you guys go to. Get reimbursed for these grants, we can pull them out of that line item easily and identify them.
Okay, okay. So I guess the third one down in expenses for highway. We do need Wyndham Regional Services as an expense line item.
And we're gonna do that.
Yeah, because that's for assistance and things.
Okay, okay.
And you can put the match down below on that other one if you want to.
Okay, so.
Cause you are gonna need that money.
Fifteen hundred for the Wyndham Regional's, uh, assistance services. And maybe the other. What was it, three thousand?
These are not.
Three thou- three or four thousand, I. Or, or, they, uh, the batches come very quickly, so you wanna just be conservative and say four thousand dollars?
Which one?
Which would be, we would add, we would add four thousand dollars to the, um. Two dash seven dash thirty dash sixty point oh two. W R C, the, the Better Back Roads Grants and Expendments.
For how much?
And add, add another four thousand. I'm speaking loud only so that everybody can hear me on that machine, I hope I'm not blowing out your ears.
And that line item is gonna always look over budget, just because you're putting in the other grant that's gonna be reimbursable, so.
Okay. Um, summer highway payroll tax for highway would be dependent upon item number one, summer highway salary. So we'll skip that right now, but, uh, that seems to have, uh, um. Be coordinated with the summer highway salaries line item number one, right? Now, summer contract services and equipment. Um, we are going to, um. Okay, if we purchase a piece of equipment, we won't need all of that, I don't know what to say about it.
Oh, okay.
Well, I, 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 that, that was a hard number for me to derive, because it, it looked like in the report that Melissa was kind of trying to print out. We had, uh, rental costs and then we had highway job costs, which was materials and labor. And the use of equipment that they perform the job. I, I believe the rental of equipment was just over sixteen thousand dollars. Excuse me, it was sixteen thousand thirty-five dollars to be in fact, what we paid out to, to rent. The, um, machine that would use for that fine crank.
Sixteen thousand?
Yeah, sixteen thousand thirty-five dollars. And then the jobs that A S Clark performed. And that apparently was materials, labor and equipment. That number was, when you add the, the numbers up on that sheet only, was thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. So then the total obviously being fifty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. And there was another six hundred and sixty dollars for a logging job that was done, so the, the total came out to be. Fifty-one thousand eight fifty-eight fifty.
Out of only forty-three hundred budgeted.
Yeah.
So, so something needs to, we need to decide what or how to approach that issue.
Would any of that, uh, fall under grants reimbursement in the middle of the fifty-one?
Uh, the nineteen nine was the grant for sixty-seven hundred dollars on the road. So the net difference there is roughly thirteen thousand dollars on that. So, so the number of fifty-one can reduce by sixty-seven hundred dollars.
And then Parker Road, the.
Parker Road, was that a FEMA? Are we gonna get reimbursed for that? No?
Well, well, there's two different, oh, Parker Road is FEMA, but there was also a. There'll be reimbursement for FEMA, yes, but. We're in a situation now because we don't.
Yeah, I realized we had put it out there, but I'm just saying, out of that, uh, there is some. We need to fix that.
Yes, we should be, we should be, we will get money back from FEMA. When? I don't know.
Well, that's the thing, yeah.
Was that big number, was that material included?
Well, we got bill, the bill, I'm sorry. Melissa, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask, that basin brothers, shouldn't that be moved to retreatment and sealing?
Yes.
Yes.
Here we go to what?
Retreatment. You're absolutely right.
Um, I don't know if you have the latest for summer contract services, but it's actually over budget by. Sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Yeah. I have it here, yeah.
That's FEMA, correct?
I think, and that's probably because of FEMA expenses.
Well, if I take that sixty-three thousand dollars out and move it over to retreatment where it should be. Then that'll bring it down to what, five thousand over maybe? Four thousand roughly?
Mm-hmm. We budgeted forty-three thousand, expenditures have it as a hundred and eleven thousand. And puts us in whole about sixty, eight thousand.
When she's taking retreat, she's talking about paving.
Paving, yeah.
That's what I thought.
And you said that nineteen nine, is that supposed to be a grant, you said?
There's a, there's a grant in the amount of sixty-seven hundred dollars.
That seems real sensible to me, Melissa, like. Since we've got forty-five thousand dollars sitting there, what do we put, like, what do we put, like, thirty-eight year, with the, with the?
So nineteen nine 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 minus sixty-seven hundred dollars leaves a net expense. By the town of thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And I believe when I did the, uh, the, uh, the grants spreadsheet, showing all of the grants that we have. That number, I believe, was in that presentation.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
She's taking all that one.
So, and when we've got, so those are those two numbers, and if we go, uh, twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars, which is Parker Road. Uh, and that's an eighty-twenty.
Well, Parker Road, but FEMA should be ninety-ten.
Ninety, okay, so I'm just gonna.
Actually, we were told how much it was. We were told, we, we, we were told how much it was, close to twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay, so, so there's twenty-seven hundred dollars, they're gonna get back on that, they can come off.
But it's really hard doing this reverse budget.
Yes.
It's, it's.
Well, it is, but unfortunately, that's part of the budgetary process, it would seem.
Yeah, well, she, Melissa felt on herself, like, pulling the money down to the, down to retreatment part, so that's gonna. Leave us with a five thousand dollars.
So, is the, the contract services, the, the materials. Gets pulled from contract services and taken out of highway material?
Worse, like sixty thousand.
Well, I guess what Mark is bringing up is, is the point that we were kinda heading for in the first place is. That, that number, summer contract services and equipment. I guess, is it for rental equipment or is it just contract jobs and what the total cost of that contract job is?
Um, it can be whatever you guys have been normally putting it in there.
Cause I, I don't see another, I don't see another topic of equipment rental. So we're mixing the cost of us to rent equipment for our employee to do the work. We're, we're combining that number with the cost to the town of having the project done. And I'm not sure we should be mixing those.
Okay, so you want, going forward, to separate them out?
I think, I think that's the way it ought to be, and not only that, but I believe when Mark, I and Archie sat down with a rep from District Two. Uh, V Trans, she wanted it broken out to know. To know specific numbers, and I think to, uh, include a qu- equipment rental with highway costs. Is gonna undermine her formula for determining what we're going to be, uh, approved for. Yeah. Just thinking this through and trying to, okay, I was in a meeting and she brought up this, you know, I, I know I'm throwing things out, I, I wish I could be more helpful, but. There, there may be another angle that Mark is alluding to, uh, and, and that I, I, I agree with Mark on. And that, that probably ought to be broken out into another category.
Okay, I can definitely do another line item and add equipment rental that you can budget for towards next year. It won't fix it for this year, cause it wasn't broke down previous before you guys started this.
Okay.
Alright.
I mean, I can break it down and move it, but it's gonna just look over budget, I don't know if it was budgeted or not from this. This current year.
We, we did have a budget last year for rental, I, I think we were in the vicinity of eight thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken.
That's it?
That's all we spent pre- previously.
Right, two weeks.
We only had it for two weeks, it was six, and then we found out it would be eight one hundred.
We had the real estate though, actually.
Yes, but we had two weeks.
So, were you?
So is there equipment rental in this, um, category right now?
I don't see it.
No.
I don't see it, no. My initial, I'm sorry.
Oh no, I was just gonna say, I'm just kinda looking, there's so many nineteen thousand nine hundreds that kinda go in and out, they almost look like they wash each other. I know Judy had problems with that check, I don't remember what it was. I think I'll have to touch base with her on that and find out what's going on.
And that's for summer contract services and equipment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the issue might have been on that one, is that when the contractor submitted the invoice. Because it is a grants and aid project. There, we, the, the, the claim form, closer, one of the closure documents requires it to be broken down into labor. Cost, equipment, use, and, uh, materials cost, there are three categories need to be broken down into. So it, it went back, I think, or was on hold until we got that information from the contractor. Because the contractor came in here to pick up the check on a Friday night at four-thirty in the afternoon. And I, I think you and Judy were here at the time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was here for that.
Yeah, yeah. So, so that's probably why you saw that a few times.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, I'm just try, just trying to move this through here, so we're gonna pause on the summer contract services and equipment at this time as well. Can you figure out? I don't know how, I don't, I don't know how I'm gonna do it, oh, okay. Highway salt and shed expenses. These were actual, it was nothing budgeted, and there was, uh, thirty thousand dollars expended. Actual cost in the twenty-twenty-two fiscal year period.
Well, I have three thou- uh, three, three thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars, not thirty-two thousand. See? Salt shed expense, thirty-two seventy-three eight or. The sixth number down.
Okay, three thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty cents, thank you very much. Um.
What, what's that?
There were probably some Wyndham Regional bills that we paid.
That's another category though, isn't it? And so, so that is a grant expense, it's not just highway salt shed expense. That's what you're saying, Dot, right?
Well, I'm, I'm, highway salt shed expense, what else would it be for?
Cause I, I, I have gone over all of the invoices.
And that number's not.
Saying that number is way too high.
Okay. Mark, what did you do last year on the salt shed that we would have, expenses would have been electric, fuel?
There were no repairs done, were there?
Nothing.
I, I, yeah, that's what, that, that looks like it, there's an error there somehow somewhere, something made its way in that line.
Alright, I can look that up if you want and let you know what that thirty-two seventy-three is.
Yeah, that would be good.
Currently, this year, there was four hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents spent on that highway salt shed.
Okay. Oh, you have a number for that?
That's what's been spent so far.
So far, okay.
Four hundred, yeah, forty-nine eighty.
Something about facility, the new. Oh, shit, like, something from Wyndham Regional or.
They came out of that, you mean, engineer or?
No.
No, no, so. No.
Alright, so she'll have to get back to us on that, and then we'll move down to the August twenty-twenty-one flood contract services. Uh, no budgeted, nothing budgeted, but twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. Actual, and this year. Yeah, twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-eight. It, uh, deficit.
Was that part of mine, did she move to the, uh, to the paving?
No, 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 that's another number. Uh, so, so, the, so twenty-nine thousand. Five sixty-four fifty is what has been paid just since July first on what related items?
No, this is fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, period twelve, is that figure. But what we have expended expenditures for this year, and. Correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, but we, uh, have a deficit of twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. Since the beginning of this year.
Yep, that's correct, and that was also in the contract service maintenances, and I moved it out and broke it out into. Its own special category for FEMA or the flood.
Right. So again, we're looking at, uh, budgeting for our, our, to finalize or finish up in. Next summer, the FEMA damages. How do we want to budget for that? Well, we're in the deficit of twenty thou- twenty thousand five hundred, I don't know how much it's gonna cost to finish the job. To finish the summer work next after.
Pretty little bit of everything.
Yeah, um, I, I don't, I don't even have.
What, what sheet?
Do you even have?
I'm getting it from, um, the highway thirty-five, November, that she sent that on, she sent that on, um.
Yes, I saw that.
Board, would you like me to connect the copy up?
Well, I, I think I handed it to you. Uh, okay.
Page seven of thirty-nine.
Oh, yeah, 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 I do, okay, yeah.
Page seven.
Yeah, yeah, good, good. Well, it's on three of five on one, I couldn't know, but, and it does match your number, twenty-four eight eight seven three. Year to date.
Yeah, um. I mean, we can continue just going. Our amazement here.
Well, how much? This is just for this year. I'm sorry, I'll retract whatever I'm thinking, I'll shut my mouth.
I, speak your, speak, because I don't really know what to, we can continue on looking down summer highway material. Uh, we budgeted thirty-four thousand, um, for the year, and. Right now, we've already spent almost twenty thousand, so we have for the rest of this fiscal year. Um, about twenty thousand dollars to, to go through.
I believe, we said thirty-four and twenty, did you?
We budgeted thirty-four.
Spent twenty.
This year.
Yeah.
We spent fourteen eight seventy-two.
Okay.
We have about nineteen thousand left for the rest of the year. Um, we continue down again, so that, that budget. And we're, I'm thinking, we're looking at, I don't know. I wonder how to make suggestions here. Uh, summer highway materials, again, well, that's what you just said. Highway emergency. What is this material highway emergency?
I think that probably in case of, uh. You know, a thaw or a flood or.
Alright, well, we had nothing budgeted, but we spent twelve hundred dollars and change. On, uh, materials for highway emergency, and that's one of the things I put on our agenda. We should have a line item for, uh, road supervisor supplies, if he has to buy a wheelbarrow, if he has to buy a, a. A power washer, if he has to buy. You know?
My estimation, that should come out of the board.
Sorry, did you put?
No, but he doesn't need that every year, he doesn't need a power washer every year, he doesn't need a wheelbarrow every year.
Yeah, you get the people out there, so people can hear you, and I'm also very ordinary, I'm not getting. Yeah, you get the speed ladders, and I'm also very ordinary, I'm getting worse. I have to say that.
I'm just thinking that those kind of items should come out of ARPA money, not out of, because it's a one-time shot, it's materials.
I think, I think we need to have a budget.
Oh, it needs to be in a budget.
Budget, the thing.
That kind of stuff needs to be.
Don't you budget for like, for your car for the year, or some kind of, you know, you can just, when you have an expense, you could probably have an emergency plan.
Hey.
We pay it too, but whenever you need.
But I was talking about that, talking about, you were talking about items like chainsaws, wheelbarrows, power washers.
Supplies.
Tools, not supplies, tools.
Tools, yes.
And I'm saying that the tools should come out of our. If you're, if you're talking about gasoline or, or something that's uh, um, that has to be replaced, like uh, the the wa, the string on a weed whacker or something like that, that's materials, that's not, that's not, that's, that's, that's not uh equipment. If you're gonna purchase something like a chainsaw or whatever, that should come out of our, that's what I think anyway. I don't think she.
Going forward, you need to have some kind of.
Sure, you want, I think you need that discussion, I don't wanna go forever on it, but I think you should have that discussion with Mark, was what he means, I mean, we should, we don't need a budget five thousand dollars for something, I don't need.
Wow, but. Well, we're, we're looking at August twenty-one flood contract services, correct? Or are we beyond that now? I I thought I heard we don't, we didn't know how we're gonna handle this.
Which one, which one is this?
Should I even be reflecting on that? Uh.
I don't, yeah, materials highway emergency, that's where we were at for twelve one thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Yeah. Emergency, yeah. Yeah, that's what it's doing. Well, I I think there needs to be a budgeted, a budget for that sort of thing. We're not gonna have ARPA fund forever, it's been budgeted in the past.
Even if it's two thousand dollars, anything along those lines, it has to be.
That's right. Now, we do have a rainy day fund, but I'm not sure that's even intended for that company.
No.
No.
That's for emergency.
Okay, so um. Is the titleing materials highway emergency, okay, and we want to change that to a two thousand dollar line item?
So that the, that would be what you're talking about the materials, what you, what you're pertaining to.
I think the highway materials is for like emergency gravel or something like that, in case of an emergency. Um, small tools and equipment could be for something for Mark if you wanted.
Small tools and equipment, you would change the line item, okay?
Adding to on.
I don't know.
Small tools and equipment.
What Melissa's talking about is an additional one. I think.
Yeah, do you want materials highway emergency, in case of an emergency or no?
Yeah.
How much should we budget for? There's nothing budgeted, this is why the question.
Well, that's what we're talking about, the, how much was that?
One, one.
There's two, and there's twelve hundred dollars that we had to spend on emergency fund, correct?
Twelve hundred dollars.
We're saturated, spend. No, 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 but what Melissa's saying could be gravel or s- some materials that were needed in an emergency, it wasn't necessarily tools, that's what, if I understand correctly, that's why she was saying, split it up.
What, gravel?
Yes. Yes, is the answer to that. So if you wanna save, save a thousand or two thousand dollars in in that what they call emergency fund there, add it, but if you're gonna talk, if you're, what Melissa's saying, if I understand it correctly, there's a separate line item for tools, and then that.
Small tool and equipment, yeah, two thousand dollars, it said that, yes. So I don't really know.
We're brave, basically, we're coming.
Yes, when you're grueling, I just don't understand this twelve hundred dollars, why?
You know, it's a shut-in at our, we may have a year, a years where there are no emergencies and our standard supply fulfill the mission. I'm, I'm in favor of just simply, I noticed it's not on the uh budget status report highway fund two, but it is on the comparative budget report. And uh, so, I'm just wondering if we just, if we felt this was an issue, just inflate the number or increase the non-standard highway material budget by two thousand dollars, and eliminate the emergency aspect of this.
And keep the small tools and equipment as a new line item?
Now, let's see what sheet is this on.
It's not on anything, it's something she made up.
Oh, uh, well, there probably ought to be a budget for that, I don't think we've done that in the past, have we?
Right, that's why I put it on the agenda, that was a concern that we need to have.
Sure, I'm all for it. I'm sorry, I'm being.
Okay.
So we're gonna do what?
Melissa, we're gonna put two thousand dollars in a new line item called small tools and equipment.
Okay.
And we um will not budget for emergency funding for the highway in a year.
Okay.
We don't need it, I don't know about that, but, okay, so, so zero.
You still have that.
If if you think there's emergency materials, then tools and such is not the place to put the two thousand dollars.
I think we're talking about, I would see.
There should be.
A thousand for one and two thousand for the other.
What did you say?
Sounds fine to me.
What'd you say?
That we should leave, put a thousand dollars into the materials highway emergency budget a thousand dollars.
Keep that. Okay.
And then have a new line item, small tools and equipment, two thousand dollars.
Okay.
And as we increase the supplies that we have in Brooklyn, then we can modify that into future, but we have nothing to do with.
Okay, sounds good.
Did you put anything under summer highway material, the regular one, did you leave that at thirty-four or?
Summer highway materials, we we have a balance, we put in thirty-four, we have a balance, and we've got twenty thousand dollars left for the rest of the year. What do you wanna do with that? We didn't want it to.
Oh, okay, I didn't know if you put a new budget number in there, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, all right, so we actually spent thirty-seven thousand six hundred seventy-one when we budgeted thirty-four thousand dollars.
Now, would that have been because of the cost of redoing the ditches and stone and so forth? That might not have gotten caught last year's budgeting.
Yes, it could have been.
So, and also one thing to remember is the cost of all products has drawn up, as well as trucking, all products.
Yeah.
So everything's gonna be a little bit more this time around. Um, talking with Archie today, he had mentioned that he thinks inflation-wise for the budget, a ten percent increase is not out of questions.
Okay, sounds good tonight.
Total now.
Yeah, looking to, kind of studying.
So, a hundred thousand beyond a hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, he put, already crossed the border and.
Okay, so when we're done piecemeal on this all, I was gonna say argue with him, I think it jumps. We can figure out what we, how much asset we have.
So I guess the question is, if we're gonna do segments of the road, in order to have the roads in town compliant by twenty twenty-five.
Holy god.
So where all our ditches are below a certain, or of a certain uh uh increase in degrees from even. Uh, we're probably gonna find ourselves in a dilemma where we need several thousand dollars in stone and ditching costs through that year, so I'm wondering if we should increase the thirty-four thousand dollar number that was budgeted for twenty twenty-three by thirty-five or four thousand dollars, bringing it up to thirty-eight?
I I would concur with that, I do think that we're going to have to spend more on the same materials and.
Still have like a half a mile on cutting out.
To do.
To be stone lined, we may get kickback to FEMA.
Right.
Uh-huh.
But it's, that's.
We'll worry about getting too much money in the account when that actually happens, we can take it off next year, but we don't have it now.
And if Archie's thinking of another ten, and I'm thinking another ten percent, I'm just wondering if we should just make it an even forty?
Forty?
Uh, uh, would that sound like to?
Considering we, yeah, I I would say, all right, let's put that down for a summer highway material, change, increase that to forty thousand dollars, knowing what we've had to deal with, costs and such.
And and part of that, like, the crushed stone that we started uh doing for our winter thawers in month season is also, I guess, considered um, but highway materials.
Summer highway in the summer.
Yeah, it wasn't broken down into winter.
Okay.
So, so the crushed stone's been added to the normal crushed gravels that we apply in the summertime. So, um, the crushed stone seems to be working super well for
All right, so that.
Winter and spring.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, you know, we, we started out with small quantity this year, we've added a few, couple more loads, so.
Okay.
Good to have a.
All right, so I think we concur with that, changing, increasing that to forty. Um, and Mark is right, if we get FEMA reimbursements, we can modify this in our next budget and and come back down quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, August flood materials, we close to forty thousand dollars was spent. I don't know how to budget for that item. Winter salaries, I'm not sure how to budget for that item. Um.
Winter salaries was change on one, wasn't it?
No, Melissa, you had to leave winter salaries and summer salaries separate, correct?
I don't see the point of it, but I mean, I don't know why everybody seems to do it. And they do it over in our town too, and I don't know why, I don't know what the point it is.
I believe you and Judy or was, well, I had a discussion with somebody, and I I believe it might have been Judy, and it's going back to uh the district two highway office in Dumerson. The T sixty report that gets filed in mid-spring, in order for them to make the calculations to determine what we're viable for for the upcoming year, they need to have it broken out that way.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, we don't have a choice in the matter. It probably would be so much more convenient if, if we didn't have to do that, but that, that's the rationale.
Okay.
It's like the, the breakout of summer labor, summer labor or summer materials, uh, uh, materials of labor, et cetera, they they use a calculation, and I can get to the sheet that she used, if you'd like to have it to have a better understanding, I probably ought to look at it myself, just to refamiliarize it, but it's the hot, the trans that's requiring that.
Okay, something I've never probably been requested for the info then, for some reason, and maybe somebody else in our office has.
Yeah, I I can't, I I know Judy asked it for a reason, and it might have been where she was gonna put uh some of the uh costs uh into cat, different categories and budgeting, and and she asked, and it was a good time that she asked it, it was right after my discussion with, with the representative from Dumerson from the highway division, and I had it right on the top of my mo, my mind, but I, I I'm ha, I would have a real difficult time, other than what I've already said, elaborating any further on it.
All right, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move us along here, should we consider uh winter salaries, uh budgeting two thousand dollars for winter salaries?
Yes, I think so. I don't know what Mark thinks about that, or.
Yeah, I mean, originally, the eight hundred was for waiting back snow bands, I can recall that we set aside that, I don't give my winter salary, this for running greater. And since we've done that, we've had warmer climate, and it's turned into more work through the winter months
Right.
as repairing soft roads, so yeah, I think two thousand down to one.
Okay, cause we did do twenty-five hundred, but we'll do two thousand for the winter salaries. Winter employee mileage, um, I think we should budget the three hundred dollars that was um actual last year.
Okay, sounds reasonable.
Winter payroll taxes will depend
Right.
on the needs here. Uh, winter contract services. Um, we know that the, the uh plowing, even though we increased our contract to thirty-seven thousand, our winter plowing is four, forty thousand this year. So I would suggest that we budget for what we're paying this year.
Sounds good.
Forty thousand dollars for winter contract services. Winter materials, again, the prices have gone up, we've been budgeting twenty-one thousand, uh, it was twenty-three thousand last year, I think it went closer to twenty-five thousand this year. I would suggest that that would be what we would put in there.
Ah, okay, I just, which, I got a question there on the winter contract service. I know forty was just snow removal. We, we had a uh, a winter flood issue, um, in the last winter up on Athens Road where a culvert plugged and we ended up having to have contracts come in through the repairs to that, so I don't know if you wanna count for something out of the ordinary, or that, that's an emergency.
That, that one involved the, the culvert that you guys replaced this summer, was it?
No, this was up further, um, at Mr. Slater's address, I can't remember the number, but.
Oh, yeah.
Culvert plugged, it sent the water down the road to the next culvert over the bank, and it lead up the road enough to uh have equipment come in and dump trucks.
So you're looking at winter mater, uh, looking at winter contract services to go from.
I mean, it was.
Oh, wait, winter materials or?
Situation. So.
Well, okay, well, winter contract services and equipment is not just for plowing, you're saying, you're saying it was for other things.
Well, yeah, I don't know if you wanna leave room for something just in case, but.
Interesting suggestion.
Well, what do you suggest?
I don't think we can plan for every little emergency, that's my thing. You know, if it happens, it happens, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, I I'm thinking that, um.
I guess you got the rainy day fund, yeah.
If we have to as an emergency, that's stabilize it, and then hopefully our FEMA's will come in there, and that will balance it all out.
Yeah, right.
All right, so I'm gonna move on, looking at the time here, uh, winter materials, we said twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and then town shed electric, um, looks like it should probably go up to maybe five hundred, probably a hundred dollars more a year, so five hundred and fifty for uh, electric at the town sheds.
Sounds funny.
Five hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
Um, town shed maintenance. We budgeting a thousand, I think that would be sufficient, especially if we consider we're going to maybe be improving that building at another time.
Yeah, we're planning.
Okay, uh, seminars highway employees, let's leave that at two hundred. Highway insurance expenses, um. I don't understand, Melissa, if we budgeted four thousand dollars, we did so for a good reason, but we only spent thirty-five dollars of it?
Um, that one I will have to look into, maybe it went into the general fund, I'd have to see where Judy might have coded it to.
Okay, um, because I'm looking at the, the uh, uh, the current year period five, it's forty-four, thirty-six budgeted, and we haven't spent anything yet.
What is the insurance actually for, like?
Highway, highway insurance expense, I don't know, if that is for the equipment that we insure?
Yeah, that I don't know, I'll have to definitely check with Judy on that to see.
Okay, very good. Um, stormwater management. Permits. Okay, so the permits are pretty consistent, it looks like, um,
I think.
Five hundred, five hundred and two forty, looks, I think that, we had to pay five hundred dollars for the permits. So probably keep the same.
Five hundred?
Well, it's, it's tw, it's, we spent twelve forty, so maybe we should do twelve fifty.
Yeah.
One thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which would be ten dollars more than we actually spent last year, just to cover the difference in cost. Equipment, fuel, parts and maintenance, we budgeted four thousand, last year we spent thirty-five, and we uh, uh, we upped the budget to forty-five hundred, should we leave it at forty-five?
The, um, price of fuels and gases has gone up.
Yeah.
It's starting to go back down, doesn't it? And you don't have.
Who knows?
Elite floor and.
Other things, so you wanna go up five hundred dollars on that?
To five thousand.
To five thousand?
I think, you know, we rented a little longer this year than the year before, so.
Oh, that's right, we have to pay for the gas, so that, don't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Diesel.
Again.
You've already spent four thousand almost this year in that line item.
Yeah.
Ooh.
All right, so.
We gotta go into June for four, for five hundred bucks, if you're correct.
Oh, we spent three thousand, yeah.
Because most just, we spent four grand already.
Yes.
Almost, yeah.
And we, we budgeted forty-five, we only got five hundred left in the budget, so the end.
And we we budgeted forty-five, we only got five hundred left in the budget till the end of June, uh oh. Guess what, Mark, you're not working.
Alright, so that doesn't, so, alright, so it's forty-five hundred, so you think we should do fifty-five hundred?
You know, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
What are you gonna do?
We have, no, I, gas prices in the last two weeks, I don't know. And and you know, the concept is that, you know, we're gonna direct more of the the barrels to heating fuel for the winter. Which is gonna leave less fuel for cars and so forth, which means the price is gonna go up a lot, you know, it just doesn't, never any bad.
Alright. So we'll increase that by a thousand dollars.
Good.
Road signs and miscellaneous, Mark, we budget fifteen hundred dollars, are you happy with that amount?
Yeah, I think, uh we actually only spent two forty-five.
Right.
For state. So should we lower it, yeah, I mean, I know we have some signs that could be upgraded, I I held back.
Right.
Not knowing.
Alright.
Then why don't we just, why don't we just make it five hundred? No?
It's a, it's a over a hundred dollars a sign, and they they get four or five stolen a year easily.
And um I wouldn't mind um and I think it falls under this category. Uh upgrading some emergency signage that move around town during.
Most season.
Yeah, let's try pod signs and then work. Close roads, okay.
Okay, I mean, hold on, so what are you saying that?
Fifteen hundred, leave it at fifteen.
Something.
Alright, culverts, our favorite thing, we spent uh eleven thousand on. Culvert. Okay, culverts, we budgeted for this year six thousand dollars, we spent seven thousand four hundred and seventy-five, so we're already in the hole for that. I do think that the culverts, especially if we're gonna be trying to meet our ha- hazard mitigation that. This has ten thousand dollars over here, we'll go in.
Well, we, are we gonna get reimbursed for the three foot diameter one?
We don't know. We don't know.
Because that would be a big time at number. And that was an out of the ordinary sized culvert that week.
So do you think that the leaving it at six thousand is good, or should we increase it to another number?
I know the cost of the eighteen's are up, I mean, they're all up, so if we could maybe uh.
Go up to fifteen hundred on that maybe, because that would be.
Yeah, I think that'd be fair.
That would be equivalent to what what we're in the hole for right now, so uh seventeen five, seven thousand five hundred.
Yeah.
Retreatment and lines, forty-five thousand dollars. Is what we put in every year.
We put forty-five in that one.
We had to, we increased it last year, um we still, like just we grassy Brook Road, that was sixty-one thousand and then Putney Mountain was another, so we. I I would think to leave that alone and maybe not do paving next year, we'll see just property treatment and repairs.
Yeah, Melissa took some out of it, to make up for the loss.
Yes.
The stuff out next to the West River was actually in their budget, is it?
We budgeted forty-five thousand dollars for the year, but any additional, it would cost sixty-one thousand to fix it.
Maybe sixty-four.
We said they didn't do sixty-one.
Sixty-four thousand maybe, yeah.
Sixty-four, that could have been out, I don't think, it was in the low sixty.
Yeah. So I would probably leave that number in hopes that we're not going to be doing much in the form of uh.
Over that?
I did know there is some uh places that we'll need in the future, but.
Right. Okay, bridge maintenance is always um, bridge maintenance, is that the washing of the.
I think so.
Green Iron Bridge and such, so.
Fire departments.
We haven't been built for that yet, so that's three thousand dollars annually.
I'm not even sure they did it, did they?
I think they did.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that they, someone commented on it. Okay, Parker Road Grant Expenses, um I don't think we have to budget for that because we're not doing necessarily a grant.
Correct.
There.
We get a break?
Um.
Yeah, that's where we're, yeah, that's where we hopefully get that twenty-seven hundred dollars back.
Alright, we will leave the uh WRC and Better Back Roads Grants Expense at four thousand dollars. Miscellaneous bank fees. And leave at zero, uh bond principal, ten thousand.
Yeah, that's.
Interest.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's danger than interest.
Um interest, I don't have, I I'm sure I have it somewhere, was that more one thirty-five dollars?
I saw it.
I don't remember. I I wanna say it's up over two, twenty-two hundred, twenty-three hundred, I we, I've got a bond schedule at home.
I do, I do also.
Okay.
Um let's, let's, let's look at the bond schedule and place in that column what the actual schedule says, the um. To.
Okay, yeah.
Term, yes, the interest rate, we can actually get that actual amount.
Yep.
Okay, um and then the small tools and equipment is two thousand dollars, um.
So have we pretty much filled out these slot? Except for the time.
Summer highways, um summer payroll, which is linked to the highways. Summer contract services and equipment, we didn't discuss.
Did you put a number in for summer payroll, did you?
Summer payroll would would be co- co- joined with the highway salaries, right?
Yes, yeah, yes, it would, and do we have a number for that?
Well, we're not sure how we're gonna.
Summer highway salaries, that's the first line.
Yes.
To be determined, okay.
I I think we could probably continue using that number because it is based on the math.
Fifty-two, yeah, yeah.
I I would leave that at fifty-two.
I feel comfortable there.
And then the uh payroll would then be the same at thirty-nine.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. And then summer contract services was, what did, what did you have on notes for that, Stan or Bruce?
Well, that's where we we ran into this two categories, rental and then what we.
Spoil.
The what we paid to uh. Uh A S Clark and such, and that number is uh was uh.
Totaled up to fifty-one.
That was thirty plus thousand and then and then the sixteen thousand twenty-one dollars or something.
Forty-six.
So maybe that should be forty-six?
Just finding those numbers again, that's a, that's too many favorites here.
Thirty and sixteen.
So then you just go through them. Or you just run them through that. And your work thing is.
Yeah.
The insurance is only going to be.
Insurance, Melissa's gonna check on the insurance.
Uh huh, okay.
And the flood materials, I'm thinking that. We we don't know how much it's gonna.
I've got those two numbers.
Okay, go ahead.
The equipment rental was sixteen thousand thirty-five dollars. And the materials and labors for the projects that were done in that category were thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. And then there was tree clearing, two projects that were done, the total of those was six hundred and sixty dollars. And the grand total was fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents.
So fifty-two thousand dollars.
Fifty-two roughly.
So that's up eleven thousand, uh no, it's up nine thousand.
So is that, we're gonna put down fifty-two?
Makes sense, fifty-two is what we said.
Might as well round, yeah.
Fifty-two thousand.
High numbers.
So I'm sorry, what were you doing? I couldn't quite hear the whole thing.
We don't know, we don't know.
We uh.
Never flew.
We looked at summer contract services and looked at the rental cost, which was a little bit more than sixteen thousand dollars. And the uh uh services contracts that we had, which was a little bit more than.
Thirty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents for uh contracted summer work for. Another entity to come in town and do the job.
Okay, and you wanted that broke out separately this next year, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, rental, summer contract, and alright, so we're gonna put down uh fifty-two thousand for that.
I'll maintain the numbers that I just quoted for our meeting with V-Trans in the spring, so. Hopefully I won't have to trouble you for that breakout at that time.
So should I put sixteen thousand, whatever it was, in the rental and then the remainder in the contract service, is that how you're breaking that fifty?
Yeah, sixteen thousand thirty-five dollars, if you don't mind doing that, that'd be great.
Okay.
And then again, there's six hundred and sixty dollars for la- uh services for trees, fallen trees in town.
So for just the shits and deals, we're gonna leave that one slot, fifty-two grand left now.
Yes, fifty-two, correct.
Okay.
And then high res salt shed shed expenses, we decided.
That.
Leave that zero.
Just a question on that.
Go ahead.
Should we start a fund to, in case you ever wanna do, like the replacement of salt shed down the road, getting added to?
I don't know, we'll take that out of the money. We haven't determined that yet. You talking about the replacement of salt shed?
Well, yeah.
That's what we're talking about?
Just.
To start, to start.
Maybe like a significant, keep the one you got and just do a self pay.
Yeah, but we.
Well, we have eight hun- eight thousand dollars, it's in a, an account that, put in way back when the concept of first start.
Bruce.
Well, no, I I I, it's in the minutes.
I thought that, I think about that, and he said it was appointed.
It was appointed somewhere, it was put into the budget.
It was put in for concrete floor for the river shed.
I think so.
Then it was moved towards the.
Salt sand shed.
Salt sand shed, which.
Which is what we were spending with with the regional.
But because it wasn't used, it may have to get reappointed back to what it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Unless you use it.
I I wonder if a question like that to to. Enter into a concept or proceed along the way of a salt shed addition, is a decision that might best be on the agenda or the list of warrant items to the town. Cuz we're gonna have to advise them, we completely terminated the contract on the larger shed.
We even know that.
Well, I don't know, but you shouldn't be leaving them in the dark either. You know, that should be an advisement somewhere, whether it be in the Selectment's Report, the Highway Department Report, or whatever. You know, and in the town report, that should be there for today.
If you're encompassing the eight thousand dollars, you have to explain that, if it's available.
Well, it's already there, it's just a matter of where do we wanna put it, right?
It's still here, it's still there?
Yes.
That isn't.
I I voted, I was on the board when Jimmy Rogers did the eight thousand dollars recommendation. And I was the chair when we, I was, we, when that wasn't happening, we went with the salt sand shed. We took that eight thousand dollars and we put it into for window regional work to plan. I can, I don't have the minutes, I can't be, but I I.
Well, it it it's, when you go through the budgets, I do see it as a line item in one of the categories. And I and I forget what it's called, if I looked through the paperwork here, I probably could find it.
Yeah, I, alright, so leave it open at this time?
Yeah, we need to do something with it, but just what I don't.
Alright, so I I know we're wanting to link here, um. I'm gonna just finish real quick, I just want you to take a look again at the agenda, there were some things like road pre-discussions, supplies, we talked about that. Road equipment budget plan, culvert replacement needs, plowing, sand and case, salt contracted. So the salt and sand contracts are part of winter materials, we budgeted for that?
I'm sorry, uh okay, you go, that's the list, okay.
Winter contract services, I just.
Winter, winter material?
Winter materials.
So that would be top and tan.
That's twenty-one, okay, so that twenty-one, twenty-five, okay, very good.
You're at twenty-five on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we increased the ditch, the stone road building materials, crack ceiling, we left alone. Alright, um bond principal, we talked about purchase power discussion, we're gonna have to um. Vermont Bond Fund, that has to be applied for by December or something.
I'm sorry, what are you talking about?
I'm just looking at this agenda thing.
She's looking at email.
I see that, and I wasn't sure what it was addressing.
Remember, we got an email from guy that says that the Vermont Bond Company is having a. I I don't know if it's.
They're they're offering small loans for for.
Yes.
For for minor remote projects, I think so, for random or equipment purchases.
Right, equipment purchases.
But based on what our last discussion and our last meeting was, I'm not so sure we even need to entertain that.
Okay, thank you, I, one last thing for us to worry about.
Yes.
Alright, so one, in the agenda, which we we, we got everything done on page one. Items seven, we did, we did items eight, communications and emails, very quickly.
Hold, 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 we're coming from him, we need to decide what you're gonna do about additional meetings.
Oh, additional meetings.
By the.
We have a meeting, um unless you wanna have another meeting in November, but.
We'll know by, we'll ne- we'll know by.
We did good here, though.
We did good, we'll know by the end of the first meeting in this December.
Yeah, now we're looking.
Oh, December first, it's Thursday, September Wednesday.
Oh, boy.
December seventh, November first, okay, that's why I'm looking here.
Seventh and twenty-first.
Well, we have.
Where are we at now? You've got, I can just recap for a second.
Appropriations.
Yeah, well, we're in it, we've pretty much got all the numbers for this. Yes, except for the insurance information, any any moving around a little bit, we basically got the numbers today. We basically got the numbers for the general fund, except for anything that was missing from the town clerk, correct?
Right.
Okay, so we got those, now next is Arva, so if we.
I hope it's not part of the.
I'm not, excuse me, appropriations.
Yeah, appropriations.
I got it in my brain, I wanna spend that money now. The appropriations we do on the, on the seventh and a sum up. And anything that's loose, loose, loose scent, and we still have the week of Christmas week to really conclude everything in terms of the budget.
So on the seventh, we're going to do.
Appropriations.
Appropriations.
Which should be take long, appropriations are quick, just saying hello to everybody, we're done, right, Melissa?
Yeah.
Just saying hello to everybody, come on in.
Works for me.
Appropriation requests, budgetary items, um and to be determined, but now we still have to do the minutes review, unless you wanna table that this week.
That's true.
On November second. And emails are ready to go, I'm gonna very quickly do.
Do it, do it, do it, it's okay, it's a short.
I'm gonna pass around the mail, we have a couple of thank yous.
It's a short one.
For appropriations, I mean, a couple of new requests for appropriations.
I'll get all of them, you put in a file and do it on that day.
Okay.
This is all appropriation?
No, some are appropriations, some are thank, thank yous, so it's the mail.
All again.
Alright, um.
More due today than we'll have to do later.
Great, now I'm ready to mail, so that's done, alright, uh review the, you can also review the minutes and.
Okay.
My binder fell apart, so I'm, I'm just. Minutes from the beginning.
This person wants to purchase around school town?
I don't know what that, I don't know what that is.
I think we should just, uh, we read it. Purchased around school town, so it looks like.
Now.
It gives us, no, it gives us land purchase, it gives a GPS coordinate, um.
They wanna purchase the land.
Alright, we have your minutes?
Yeah, that's pretty. I only have one in.
Three oh eight.
I have, I just have.
What are you doing?
I'm trying, I'm trying to find like the, my minutes, that I can say page one, page and page three, and I am over down here.
Well, we don't have what you're doing next time, maybe we.
No, I don't have them here.
Alright, let's just table it.
We have yours?
No, I only write them.
I have nothing, I I looked at it.
Sorry, don't worry about it, there's only four pages and three.
Right. I can look at them, is anybody, okay, let's um review the improved, review the minutes from November second's Select Board Meeting. Does anybody have any changes to page one or four?
I don't have any changes.
Does anybody have any changes to page two or four, Bruce?
Very top of the page, that's, that's paper, was it second?
The accounts payable on page two, it was second.
Was a second. There was no second. It's amazing I even, it's amazing I even saw it.
We'll have to watch the video.
You have it?
No, uh, again, uh, the ver- it's at the very top. We're gonna do an accounts payable.
Yeah. There was no second. They, uh, the, the other one was seconded, but that one wasn't.
So how do we, what do we do then? It was approved because the accounts payable were sent out.
I just saw the minutes.
It unfortunately might have been missed. I, I do seem to recall that there was a second. But I don't know who did it. I don't know, me or Bruce. I'll watch the, I'll watch the page. It's not gonna be far into it.
Okay. Alright, Peter, so we don't know who did the accounts payable seconded on the minutes.
Peter's gonna
And we're going to, I know he's gonna be, he's record, watching, recording.
Oh, I got
And so he's gonna, he watched it from the recording last time too. So we will have to confirm that, but any questions or any, it's on page four or four?
Uh.
Three or?
I have no idea what, uh, under the term time clock. He says, Mister, discuss a check dated July one. There was discussion, a time clock would be required for all employees or none. I, I don't know what that relates to either. I'd be happy to look at the page and see what that's all about. And just obviously a need for a change, I think.
Alright, I'm gonna table the approving of the minutes from the November second meeting until next month, so that we can have an accurate those two items. Um, is there anything else the select board would like to cover?
Only on page one. There was a second gentleman, a second gentleman who, uh, was involved in that declaration of inclusion. And for public, the name Al Wakefield should be added because he was a gentleman that came late and
Yes.
later on into the, uh, page. So that's the only change I have on one. Uh, there was another number on another page that didn't make any sense to me, uh.
We'll go over it all on next, next, next meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we're gonna have a meeting on the seventh, nothing before?
Let's see how it happens.
I wouldn't mind meeting, well, I'd guess the seventh, there would just, it, it, you know, I, I
Simon, you wanna sit down? I would like to stand with somebody and, and, and
Let's do it.
Together, I can get the numbers in there, so that
For sure we have it, we just have to review it.
Just, just
And then we come to the seventh.
We'll be all smooth sailing.
Smooth sailing.
Alright.
Appreciation. I, I'm gonna take time, some time between now and, and the middle of next week to put on this on a current spreadsheet on the computer. So as we're going through
Amazing.
we can just simply give it to Melissa or, and or share amongst ourselves.
Okay. Alright, this time I'd like to, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Can I have a second?
Seven.
Bruce has
Good surprise, good surprise.
Uh, all those favors.
Bye.